With people and children and animals, there are no guarantees of health. You're either lucky or you're not lucky, or in the cases of agriculture and animals and pets and so forth, the people that are responsible do their level best to breed away from defects. And you can find some of those things. You have heart murmurs, you have hip dysplasia, all kinds of diseases and so forth that you can breed away from. But you cannot guarantee that the animal will be absolutely health free. Try as you might. People are the same way. I'm sure you've been there. I have friends dying all the time for diseases that, you know, they've had history in their family, didn't have history in their family. So that's what I have to say about that. Any questions? Thank you very much. You may go. Please state your name and address.
I'll try to amplify my voice a lot so everyone can hear. My name is Noah Henin and my address is 8404 Warren Parkway that's here in Frisco, 75034. I want to thank you council for letting me speak here again today. For the sake of transparency, I do want to state, I am a former boy in Petland and I did speak in front of the council here a few years ago when the city ordinance was placed back then. As a, I am a pet owner. I have pets outside and inside of Petland. And just like anyone else who actually genuinely cares about their pets and their companions, they are just that. They are a part of your family. They are a part of your soul. And everyone loves them and treats them with respect, the respect they deserve. And when I was at Petland, that is exactly what I got and what I saw they got, love and respect. I believe everyone who works there truly cares for these animals and truly loves them and gives them the best care and love that they can while they're under Petland's care and love. When the last ordinance was passed, what that ordinance to me did was it added an extra level, complete level of transparency to Petland in the process of gaining a new family member. And for Petland, which had nothing to hide, it was just a great opportunity for them to show everyone and show you council how much they care about these animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Borella?
I cut my letter down so we don't have to do. Thank you so much for this meeting this morning. 2935 Masters Drive Dallas, 75227. First off, I'm not against rescues and shelters. I have rescue and shelter dogs as well. What I don't support is also shelters have a lot of dangerous dogs. There's also a recent accident here that happened. But I do want dogs to be vetted. And dogs are vetted as a shelter rescue, not equally as the pet shops. Pet shops are overregulated. They know their breeders, they know the USDA standards. Shelters or rescues are not. And it's causing dangerous dogs to be in homes with children, older seniors, accidents can happen. So I don't propose shutting down pet shops. I just think that if you want to get a rescue dog, get a rescue dog. If you want to get a puppy, get a puppy. It should be a choice. Also shelters do juggle aggressive dogs from shelter to shelter. They don't talk about this. It's a major problem. The dogs' histories are raised. If a dog had a problem, they don't know about it at the new shelter, so it's not fair. Puppies don't have that problem. Shelters and rescues don't talk about the problems they have inside the shelters. They do have accidents they don't talk about. They keep it to themselves. The overpopulation is not happening because of breeders. It's also happening because shelters and rescues don't tell you where their dogs come from. They come from other countries. They have no regulation at all, so they can do whatever they want. So I respectfully ask for your vote and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ludy Patterson?
Thank you all for being here and listening to my testimony today. My name is Ludy Patterson and I am president and co-founder of The Cavalry Group, which is a national member-based company that represents lawful animal enterprise and animal owners across the US. Mandating that pet stores discontinue selling animals from regulated licensed breeders and replacing those animals in pet stores while also forcing consumers to only source their pets, family pets, from rescue shelters is a public health and safety risk. In case you haven't seen a lot of the news stories across the US, also right here in Texas, there have been many instances of dog bites and maulings and even very life-threatening issues that have come about when people, families have unknowingly sourced, well, they have sourced their family pet from rescues and shelters unknowingly, not knowing anything about the background of these animals. And it really is a public health and safety risk. And so putting this mandate on pet stores to source the animals that they sell from rescues and shelters is very, very serious. My question for all of you, just to ponder, if this ordinance were to pass and the pet stores in Frisco sourced their dogs to sell from rescues and shelters and a consumer was injured, bitten, mauled, or worse, who's liable? Is the pet store liable? Is the rescue liable? Is the city council liable? I mean, these are serious questions because this is a very serious matter across the US right now. We're seeing an epidemic of dog bites and maulings. Shelters and rescues do not carry general liability insurance to protect their consumers. Therefore directing the consumers to obtain a dog that has been sourced from a shelter rescue is indeed a liability and one of grave concern. If you're going to mandate that pet stores can only source their animals to sell from rescue shelters. The sale of family-friendly purpose-bred puppies represents a significant percentage of the Frisco Petland store sales. Will the city of Frisco be providing funding or reduction of sales, real estate taxes to make up for the Frisco Petland store reductions in revenue? Something to consider. Has the city of Frisco's legal council considered whether the city council can designate what products a Frisco, a lawful Frisco business can legally sell? Will there be other anti-business regulations being introduced on other minority businesses in the city of Frisco? We are not anti-rescue. In fact, we're in favor of consumer choice. If someone wants to obtain their family pet from a rescue shelter, they should feel free to do so. There are risks involved, but the inherent risks are definitely there for the shelter to educate the consumer.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Absolutely. If you're very sincere about your desire to see businesses succeed here in Frisco, why would you place so many business-killing restrictions on these lawful businesses simply because they don't align with the animal rights ideology that is putting pressure on Frisco City Council? We respectfully ask that you reject this pet sale ban and rescue mandate on Petland. Thank you.
One last thing. Did you state your address for the record so that Kristy can get it?
Absolutely. I did put it on the card.
Okay. You okay, Kristy?
Keaton White?
Hi, this is Keaton White. 1629 Angel Lane, Aubrey, Texas, 76227. I want to start by saying I love my job and I have loved my job for the last, every day for the last nine years. I love my staff because we truly are all at Petland for the right reason. We love animals and we want to teach people and show people the beauty of pet ownership. This ban would take that opportunity away from all of us. When a consumer chooses to purchase a puppy from us, we provide more guidance and support than any breeder ever would. Due to all we offer with our puppies, we're a great option for first-time dog owners and are there for them every step of the way, even providing private training for their puppies' lifetime. We pride ourselves in setting them up for success, ensuring they understand all aspects of pet ownership and finding the perfect puppy to match their lifestyle. While I fully support the choice to adopt, I believe it should remain just that, a choice. As evidenced by the hundreds of people that come to our store on a daily basis, there's a huge demand for specific breeds that cannot be found at a shelter, as well as the opportunity to raise a dog from the time they're a puppy. This demand will not suddenly disappear if you were to shut our doors. Instead, I foresee the consumer turning to online stores where scams are abundant and warranties are not honored. A supposed goal of this ban is to rid the world of puppy mills, but I assure you that won't happen. Those aren't my breeders. If this ban passes, we will see an increase in unlicensed and unregulated breeders who don't have the government oversight and approval that mine do. I'm not here to blanket statement all my puppy sales, but puppy mills easily hide behind a screen where there are no regulations. Banning us from continuing to use our breeders will only deepen the pockets of puppy mill operators and scam artists, two types of people we all should agree we don't want to hand success to. I could talk about and argue why Petland should stay open forever, but I'll stop here. Instead of calling for a complete ban and taking away our freedom of choice, I argue for continued regulation under the current city Frisco ordinance. We strive to be ever improving and we hope to continue to set the standards for pet stores nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby Babaski. Sorry if I missed that.
You did a perfect line.
Thank you.
My name is Shelby Babaski. I'm at 6823 La Vista in Dallas, Texas. I am the president of the Texas Humane Legislation Network. Apologies, I was, I'm now the executive director. Couple of things I just want to clear up quickly. With respect to Mr. Preilich's statement that shelters are not regulated, sorry, strongly disagree with that. We actually wrote the laws that shelters are regulated and you have a wonderful animal control officer here, Stephen Leonard, that knows all about the laws and you can talk to him about that. In addition to that, Ms. Kalson's claims that we're forcing consumers to purchase from shelters or rescues, absolutely not true. You can go to your local breed clubs. I think Mr. Preilich said that he is a part of the American Fox Terrier Club. We're asking people to go to their local breed clubs. If they want a specific breed, they can go there. I love dachshunds. I went to the DFW Dachshund Rescue Society and I was able to find dogs there. So I just want to clear that up quickly. I will be quick. We assist municipalities throughout Texas for free. We try to bring them the best ordinances out there and we try to update their shelter regulations or ordinances regarding animals to make sure that they have the best practices and procedures. I've been involved with THO since 2011. One of the consistent complaints we received, we have a 1-800 telephone hotline, is that people purchase puppies specifically from Frisco. We've gotten calls, in fact, two weeks ago we got a call, and these puppies are sick or they don't end up making it. But I'm here to talk about the manner in which the animals are sold, which is incredibly important. A humane pet store ordinance would protect consumers from complicated contracts and high interest rates. When I volunteered at my local bar association, I'm an attorney, and they would call in and customers were greed. They had no way to go back and try to collect the thousands of dollars in vet bills that they had spent on these sick puppies and they had no way to return the puppy in a manner or try to keep the puppy that already had parvoed, distemper, or any of the issues that they had. The consumers were already out thousands of dollars for purchasing the puppies and they had become entangled in complicated financing agreements. They were responsible, like I said, for huge vet bills and so forth. I'm an attorney and I was a former member of the animal law section of the state bar of Texas and these complaints are common on our list. In fact, today I got a call from an attorney in Fort Worth on the way up here and he said he just got called from someone that had purchased a dog from Petland that was sick. Attorneys discuss the same fact pattern, but the lawsuits are too costly for the average consumer. We don't have a puppy law in Texas, so we don't have a way to fix that. In my experience, the pet stores are well-resourced and they deal with these complaints regularly and customers either settle for little to nothing and when they do pursue a lawsuit, they have to file a non-disclosure agreement. So nobody knows about the amount of lawsuits or defrauded customers that are out there. So it's been my experience that they sell these expensive puppies with a high interest rate and it's a long-term contract. So because current Texas law does not adequately protect consumers, puppies are getting canceled and selling to pet stores, I think that Frisco is ready for our humane pet store ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joshua Knodt, I'm the general manager for the Petland at 2930 Preston Road. First, I want to, will there be Q and A later? I know this is input. My understanding was that maybe there would be Q and A, or do I just say?
This is your opportunity to say what you want to say and council may ask specific questions of people in the room later.
Okay, all right. So I welcome specific questions. I don't have everything typed out. Like I would like to say, I would just like to address any questions or concerns. Speaking freely, I'd say we feel unheard and blindsided. There was no conversation. We were welcomed to the city building here a few weeks ago and on the way in, we kind of speculated, what do they want to talk about? You know, is it, do we want to review performance since the ordinance went into effect? And we always strive for perfection. Pretty much impossible, but you can try every day. Maybe they want to raise the standards, maybe they want to talk about where we can do that. Instead, we were informed that there was a draft already written out that would effectively put us out of business. I think it's really important in any relationship to have good communication. I feel like there was no communication and that's what I want. I want to be able to answer every question. I want to be able to address every concern on a high level. I understand this is a very emotional topic and the one thing that brings every single person in this room together right now is love, love for animals, care for animals, wanting to do the right thing. But I feel like we have to have effective communication. We need to look at facts. I mentioned to Mr. Hill at that meeting a couple of weeks ago, we're very focused. We review the ordinance every day. We're a keep our head down, work hard, and go home. We don't showboat. I feel like we're vilified all of the time. People just want to talk about all the horrible things that they think we stand for and it's the complete opposite. Like I said, it's the love of animals that brings us all together. Jake and I are the ones that run the show every day and we're nothing but caring people. I don't, I don't take, I don't take time off of work to go on vacation. I take time off of work because I'm a casa. I'm a quarter point of special advocate for children's foster system. I wear this buckle every day and embrace charity events, funding, raising money against child abuse. Jake is a ridiculously giving person. And we hate, this is the first time I, Jake and I, have ever even verbalized publicly charity efforts. But two weeks ago, I had an employee come to me. He said, "Josh, I'm really struggling and I made some bad choices and I lost my car." And I'm riding my bike to work every day and Jake cuts me off and says, "My sister-in-law sells a car. I'll buy him the car. He doesn't owe me anything. I'll pay the insurance for a few months. We'll get him back on his feet." Just like that. I was thinking maybe we talked about Uber credits, but that's just who he is. We're caring people. I have goosebumps right now. I want to make the ordinance better, but don't put me out of business. Don't put my work family out of business. So I maybe ramble. Maybe I should have had a piece of paper, but I hope there will be Q and A at some point here or later. Please talk to us. Thank you.
I'm Jake Patel. I'm the owner of Petland Frisco. Is that at 2950 Gentle Creek Drive? Hello, everybody, council members. Thank you, Josh. I've been in Frisco, I've been in business for two decades, 20 years now. I employ 30 people. If this ordinance goes through shelter, I can only buy from the shelter, my business will close in 30 days. All my employees will be out of the job. My store will be closed. Simple as that. Unfortunately. Very, very hard to business that way. All my staff are like my family, 30 of them. I have to think of them too. Leaving Josh in there, probably one, a lot of people may play, could meet him, dang one. That's 20 years. One company that should speak volumes. That should. The goal is good, you know? Nobody wants a substantive breeding. We don't want it. Nobody wants that. If you guys go to a rescue model, the substantive breeder is going to bloom. They're going to come out of nowhere. They're going to be here in Frisco selling their puppies because they know there's a demand. Our customers know exactly what they're looking for. They come in, "Oh, we research have knees. Do you guys have any have knees?" You know, we show them have knees and everything. Do you have a foregy? They know exactly what they're looking for. These are our customers. They're here in Frisco. This is what they want. You're going to reward the bad breeders. The good guys, not the good guys, I mean, the people who pay the taxes, the legal brick and mortar building will be gone. Guys have to think about that. The legal business, brick and mortar, there's not humanly overdeveloped. With all intentions, this ban will do exactly the opposite. I urge counselors, please, 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 think of a way where you can work together. The community wants us. They can purchase a puppy in a safe, environmentally placed. We are licensed. We inspected and we have veterinary-focused facility. Petland, thank you so much. I don't know what else to say. I will be in business, I'll go out of business in 30 days if this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawna?
So my name is Shawna from Dogtopia. We opened our door last year, but we see dogs from literally every aspect of Petland, shelter, specific breeders, and rehoms. And we actually haven't seen any health concerns or behavioral concerns amongst any of those pups. There is generic issues between all pups and we work with the pet parents and we work with the pups and we just give them the right guidance and they go with it. But yes, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. The last caller we have is Elizabeth Kunselman.
Thank you. We're not having anything except my stuff down. I'm Elizabeth Kunselman. I am from 250 Berberside Street in Dogtopia, Ohio. I'm the vice president of Petland for Public Affairs and Legislative Affairs. So thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak. First of all, I really want to commend you for having and putting together the strongest ordinance in the country. It's impressive. It is comprehensive. It ensures that local pet stores are following the rules and are in compliance and it's working. And so if it's working, then my concern would be if it's working, we're two years in, why do we need to result to something more extreme like a ban? Why would it be necessary to close down a business, as Jake already mentioned? I think we can all do better. I think that we see a lot of caring people in the room and I think there's a great desire for everybody to work together to come up with a solution that's fair for everybody. We do have a compromise that was already reached and voted on in the Senate Business and Commerce Committee last session and that included Senator Paxton who voted for that. And I can leave a copy of that behind that shows who did vote for it. But this compromise language, which was a Senate substitute for HB 1818, provides additional buying and sourcing documentation standards to regulate puppies coming into the state. So if we implemented and shared that language with the current pet store ordinance, it really would be a very, very strong ordinance for the city of Frisco. Not only do breeders have to be licensed by the USDA, they also have to be licensed from which state they come from. They have to exceed Texas breeder legislation, breeder standards, and they can't have any violations for four years. Violations can be something as simple as tartar on your teeth. So four years if that gets noted, then Petland stores cannot buy from that breeder for another four years. The language, I think, combined with what you already have in place would really form a strong ordinance and I think that there's plenty of room to work. I think there's desire on both ends to make this work and there's compromises that are available with all types of issues as it relates to whatever the concerns may be in how they're fulfilling their end of the ordinance. If there's an issue with paperwork, if there's a specific issue, we're happy to address it. And I want to address just a couple of things because we do hear the rhetoric that Frisco's selling sick puppies, but I can tell you that we document everything. It's all documented and we know that for all of 2020 and 2021, less than 1% of all the puppies sold were treated for a hereditary or congenital issue. So as a comparison, instances of congenital hereditary issues in children are around 3% according to the CTC. So that's just a comparison out there. So it's very low instances of this happening. But puppies can get sick. We do have a warranty and it's a one-year warranty. We're certainly opening, open to extending that warranty.
If you could start wrapping up your comments, please.
Certainly. We do not have NDAs. They do not force any NDAs, non-disclosure. So I want to make sure that's out there. And we have not converted 12 stores. So I'm not sure who said that, but I can assure you that we have not converted all stores. Thank you very much. I hope that you work together.
Thank you. That's the last caller we have.
So anyone else before we close it off that would like to speak here in this room?
Did not sign a card.
We could fill up one after, if you'd mind.
My name is Seal Holloway and I am a Frisco resident and bear with me because I was making notes as fast as I could and quickly. Comments were made about how the store functions perfectly and my question would be how they couldn't function perfectly without selling puppies. Well, Mrs. Pelleci's testimony was they could function perfectly without selling puppies or kittens because we have multiple other puppy stores in Frisco that function perfectly without selling animals and without having problems. Correct? We do. Okay. Puppies can be purchased through responsible caring breeders who breed and raise their puppies in their homes. So people can get purebred puppies when they go to responsible breeders in their homes, they meet the parents of those animals, they see the environment that those puppies are raised in, and they know that they're getting purebred puppies that were not shipped from Missouri or Ohio on trucks for 11 to 15 hours and arriving at a pet store where they arrive sick. They're eight to 10 weeks old and we know that that's problematic. You know that that's problematic. That's why we have those sick puppies. That's not a problem when you pick them up from the breeder who's breeding them in their homes. The store may be licensed, but it's not respected. And you continue to say it's a respected store, but it's not respected by everybody because you don't always sell healthy puppies. This is not personal. The council doesn't mean to make it personal. We don't mean to make it personal. And we're sorry to hear these personal stories. We all have personal problems, but this is a business. Just like people in here have restaurants, they have stores, they have technological businesses, this is a business. It's not personal. It's very personal to the sick puppies. It's very personal to the people who pay $10,000 for those puppies and go before city council and say, "What do I do? They're not giving me my money back and they continue to charge me to take the puppy back in for a recheck." And various people have come before council and I know that the council members that are here know because you have heard the stories. And I don't know that it's less than 1%, so I can't dispute that percentage. But for the people who come before you and have paid the astronomical amount and then they have a sick puppy that's dying? What's the answer? The ordinance isn't working. It's all regulation and it cannot be enforced.
Seal, we need you to start wrapping up your comments, please.
Okay, I am. I've got one more. Thank you. Nothing is said about where these puppies come from and that's what I would have liked to have heard addressed from the opposition here. None of you addressed that and that's what our concern is, is our concern is that they're being shipped from out of state. It's a pipeline from the puppy mill to Frisco and that's what we're trying to eliminate. So if we could have that addressed, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Please fill out your card.
Anybody else want to speak?
Thank you very much.
111.
Shannon Brier, four six two four nine nine one. I'm sorry, I was not planning on speaking today, so I am not dressed for the occasion. Two points. I think that we brought more victims in front of you than Petland employees who have spoken today, and I think the voices of those victims should be much louder than the Petland employees you've heard. Two, I take it very personally as the President of Friends of the County Animal Services and someone who has worked at animal shelters for years, the inclination that we move around dangerous dogs, that is completely untrue. And I take it offense on behalf of the ACOs I work with, the PDs that we work with to do dangerous dog cases, that is an accusation that without evidence is completely about, completely. And I think that the voices of our victims, at the end of the day, speak way louder than these employees who are making a lot of money off sick dogs, and I plan to bring you more, so that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Okay, just so y'all know, this is a work session, so these are not consider an act items, so no official decisions are made on any of the agenda items today. They're just not due for council to have discussions and then give feedback to staff as far as next step that we would like to take. And so, with that, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Item two is discussion regarding the city of Frisco's sign ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. So, before you, we have brought the sign ordinance a few times for some discussion. It was revolving around some considerations for allowing additional types of signs. Those were requested by contractors, developers, business owners, even sign contractors, and we tried to work to incorporate those into our signs ordinance. We moved past that into the review stage for legal, and it was brought to our attention that we need to address some content-based regulations. This is brought about by some Supreme Court decisions in the past about strict scrutiny over content-based regulations of signs. That's, to make it short, you have to read the sign to regulate it. So, we had to manipulate some of the language and the structure of the sign ordinance to meet that strict scrutiny that the sign ordinance has to meet in the First Amendment. And this required large structural changes, mainly it revolves around temporary types of signs. Also, some permanent, semi-permanent types of signs mainly. So, where we previously had signs that were regulated by the types of signs specific to the content, we had athletic registration, broad sale, real estate, HOA, home improvement, school signs, that were specifically called out as sign types in our ordinance. We had to group those into a more broad term of a temporary residential sign. Signs that are temporary, they're allowed in a residential neighborhood. Within that sign type, we will have regulations. We tried to, as close as we could, mirror what we already had for content-based sign regulations into the more broad term of a temporary residential sign. Additionally, we had real estate, project development, drive-through menu signs, internal monument-type signs. We had to group those into panel signs, commercial. So, panel-type signs, it's a broad term that's allowed in a commercial-type zoning district. Political apartment, non-commercial message would be grouped into temporary commercial signs. Those are on the temporary basis, not a panel sign. Panel signs are more semi-permanent, permanent. Those were grouped into a temporary commercial. And last is model homes, school worship, and some of these signs would be grouped into monument-type recognition. So, a more permanent-type sign that's allowed in a residential zoning district. So, what does all of that mean? It means it's really complex. And this is like a first, almost a first stab at getting this right. There's, after the Supreme Court decision, there's not been a lot of municipalities that have gone and attacked the issue within our sign ordinance. But we could not bring a sign ordinance back to you with all of these changes that the community has requested without addressing this core issue of content-based strict scrutiny signs. So, we have different types of signs that are within a residential zoning district, temporary residential signs. Because of the way of the language of how we're allowing these signs, we can't say, okay, a sale, for-sale sign, we can't say that anymore because you would have to read the sign to determine that. It's a sign for sale. We actually have to write language that says, you're allowed this sign if and when you have a property that's for sale. So, it's more based on the location and the property itself than any one person or any content of the sign. It can have holes hooked in it. It has to be loosely written enough that we can get it regulated minimally, but also address the concerns of strict scrutiny. So, we'll have to see time to tell. I think if we run up into problems where excessive signs, that's one of the problems is we could possibly see more signs. We could also have difficulty determining compliance. So, when is a house under sale? We have to do more work to make that determination if a house is under sale. So, it is more difficult. We could have, because it's more location-based and what is occurring at that location than the content of the sign, we could have multiple signs within a residential district or a commercial district. The things we have going for us are, it reduces the possibility of legal challenges, absolutely. That's the best thing we have going for us. Number two is neighborhoods are likely more self-regulating in Frisco, so we have HOAs to help us along this path to creating a sign ordinance that not only serves our customers and all the flexibility that they want, but also in allowing, in creating a beautiful city.
So, but does the ruling allow for HOAs to be restrictive like that? Because I know the whole campaign sign, HOAs used to try to make people remove candidate signs, but they couldn't, so...
Yeah, so, two different things going on. The Supreme Court opinion that Phil was mentioning is called Breed versus Town Gilver, thousand twenty fifteen. It does not limit or impact the HOA's ability to regulate signs at all. There have subsequently been state law legislations that have been adopted that does limit what HOAs can do with respect to certain types of sign, politically, political signs being one example. This change, this ordinance, this draft ordinance, it does not affect any of those items. And so, maybe the HOA's regulations are, will still be in place, subject to whether state law will limit.
So, we're looking forward to getting this in front of you for consideration. We just wanted to make you aware of these structural changes so that if any questions come up, you can forward those questions to us.
I guess any specific concerns that you have from a staff perspective? I mean, I know we've tried to do a good job in Frisco over the years as far as limiting signs and limiting these bandit signs, you know, and the thousand builder signs and all these kinds of things.
My concerns is, like I said, is this is kind of a first stab at getting our sign ordinance in line with the Supreme Court's decision. So, there's going to be challenges that come to us where we try to find out where to make it work in our ordinance correctly. That's my criticism. So, it's within the realm of possibility that we have to come and revisit it because it's something that somebody brings to us that we're just not expecting.
So, I guess the goal is to craft the ordinance so that effectively visually, we would see no difference, but you're just writing it new under the new guidelines.
That's correct, structurally different, but functionally the same.
And I guess as you take through this process, when you find potential holes, like, oh, here's one we couldn't figure out, and you're going to bring them back to us and make us aware of.
Now, one thing to mention, this is one of many ordinances that Development Services has, that we do a routine checkup on ordinances, like the SOB ordinance, the sign ordinance, we look at those by the end of three years based on case law and then based on waivers that have been granted by the, like, the planning and zoning commission. So, we're constantly trying to keep our ordinances up to date.
John, you might want to mention, too, that not only are you addressing this issue, but also you've gotten feedback from the development community and others about specific sign types that will be integrated into the...
This is the base ordinance. We do have other sign discussions that are coming along that would be outside of this ordinance, and it has no functional effect on this ordinance at this time. We can continue with this to address our immediate customer concerns and come back to you with additional requests.
Cancel a question, yeah? All right, thank you. And that will move us to item three, discussion regarding retail sales available.
Phil, thank you for the question. You're here to talk about the animal ordinance as a result of a discussion that you had for that work session in which the discussion continues to come up about the concerns related to the city of Frisco. I've given you a note of the furiosity, and I'll call your attention to some of those as we go forward. We do have Chief Phil Clay, he is here, he can talk about what the results have been under the existing ordinance, and you go into detail, given the amount of time that you have, if you want to do that, we can do that first, or if it's going to back to that power, you'd like to proceed.
Let's go to that first. It'd be good to give some council members kind of the history of this topic, I think.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Hill said, my name is Billy Clay, I'm Assistant Chief of the Frisco Police Department. Currently, I do have operations underneath me, which includes animal services. I was asked to come up here and speak real briefly about some of the concerns that have come to us through citizens and complaints, and also different enforcement actions that we've had since the change of the ordinance when we worked together to change that back in two thousand twenty. So, activity overview, six inspections have been completed as part of the new ordinance, and nine complaints have been received. Again, this is going to be a very high-level view, and I'm not going to dive into each one of those, but if there's questions later, we can...
Just real quick, how long has our ordinance been in place?
Since two thousand twenty.
Two years, so two years.
January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, I believe, is the date.
Phil, why don't you back up to the prior slide and kind of go over the...
So, changes were made to the ordinance back January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, as approved by City Council. The ordinance strengthened requirements for the retail pet stores in which dogs, cats, and rabbits were sold, allowed for increased transparency regarding the location of animals and where they were acquired from, and allowed for increased transparency regarding animal health and care. So, basically, with the goal in mind of the buyer having the best information possible when they made the decision about the owner. Going back to the numbers, again, six inspections were completed out of this ordinance. Nine complaints have been received. Within those nine complaints, the majority of the allegations were that the dogs were sick when they were sold. There was three complaints of improper care within the store. One complaint of not providing the animal source, which is the breeder information, and then one for violating transparency of the sale. Of those nine complaints, there was one violation that was found to be accurate, and citation was issued for that, it was violating the transparency of sale of the animal. Violations to date, we were, since June, these are the inspections, I'm sorry. The inspection dates, June thirty, two thousand twenty, there were, this is just past the new ordinance, there were seven violations, written warning was issued at that time. August twentieth, sixth of two thousand twenty, there was one violation, on that one, a citation was issued. October thirteenth of two thousand twenty, there were two violations noted on the inspection with two citations issued. February fifth, one violation, that was corrected on-site. October fourth, there was one violation noted with a citation issued. November second, same thing, one violation, and that was corrected on-site. Total, there were thirteen violations since the inception of the new revisions. One written warning was issued, four citations was issued, and two issues were corrected on-site. All the violations included missing paperwork or incomplete paperwork. It should be noted that none of the violations dealt with any care of animal issues that were observed by the animal services officers that went in. There were no health violations that were observed at the time. So, that's a very quick overview in an effort to keep the time short of what we've done since January twenty-first of two thousand twenty as regards to the inspections and enforcement of the new ordinance.
So, we have kind of, I guess, two ends of the funnel that we're evaluating, right? It's the input, where they're coming from, and then, of course, you're also going there on-site to look at the output, how they're being cared for, all those kinds of things, kind of post-acquisition. I know we get documentation of where they're purchased, but are we doing anything with that? Are we verifying against USDA? Are we checking for these violations, or...
No, sir, we do not have any regulatory authority over where the dollars are sourced from. Basically, when this ordinance was enacted, it was a way for us to make sure that the owner or the potential buyer was receiving the information where they can make an informed decision. We weren't doing anything as following up and checking the records of the source breeders or anything like that, traveling to other states or anything of that nature.
So, as I was indicating, Mr. Mayor, the council has asked us to look at this further based on the results that we've had thus far and continued issues and concerns that were being raised, fundamentally going back to what Chief Clay indicated. We don't really have regulatory authority outside our city limits. Now, council did say last year that they felt that the state legislature should weigh in on this because ultimately it's a statewide issue, it's not something that Frisco can solve in and of itself. And so, Representative Patterson did put forward in front of the House and did get passed by the House, a restriction that was limited to the animal shelters and the rescue agency, and that would be the source for the animals. The Senate side, they were able to get to, before they ran out of time, they were able to come up with additional language that would allow for the sale of animals through breeders that were designated as respected, responsible breeders, and through the Occupational Code, they set those standards by which those breeders would have to comply. You have a copy of those items with you for you to be able to take a look at. That resulted in a proposal back from the Senate Committee as a substitute bill defining the dog or cat breeder under the Occupational Code, and then also making certain qualifications for what the breeder would be. That, unfortunately, it ran out of time, and so, we're back kind of with the same question ultimately for you to consider. The bill that was passed by the House is becoming the basis on which the draft that you have or in front of you as an ordinance to consider is the House bill.
Which does not include the additional language.
Does not include the Senate one, which it was based on Representative Patterson, what he was able to pass through the House.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would, I guess, just some initial thoughts. I mean, I think it goes without saying that, you know, everyone on council, and certainly everyone in this room, on both sides of the room, when you see awful pictures of mistreatment of animals or puppy mills, you know, those kinds of things, they're certainly horrifying, we certainly don't want that happening in our city. We don't want anything that is leading to that happening, you know, in our city. I think when we passed this two years ago, I mean, I think even at a council, that we're going to see how that went, and, you know, our expectations were very high. You know, this is more looking at kind of the output side. I mean, I would say, in the numbers in two years, if you would have told me the night that we passed this, that in two years we'd be reviewing the numbers and these would be the numbers, I would say that the work done to that date was effective on this output side. If they claim we have the strictest in the country, I can't verify that. I don't know if that's true, I don't know if you know if that's, I mean, that's, you know, impossible to verify. It'd be great if it was anywhere close to that. I think kind of shifting gears, what we're looking at is, I know the passion of many of our advocates is anything that can be done to help kind of on the other end of the funnel, that input side is, you know, rather than just providing transparency, if there's additional things that can be done to effectively, you know, make sure that we're not doing anything or a business in our community isn't doing anything that would, you know, lead to that. or business in our community isn't doing anything that would, you know, lead to that. I think, and it sounds like there's a willingness to certainly strengthen and work with the city, so at the very least, I think we do that, you know, if we can make it stronger without putting additional burden, you know, on our already strained police resources, which we already know are understaffed from our work session, before we add any additional kind of responsibilities, you know, on top of that, and then also be able to make sure that anything we put in place is not just a paper policy that can't be enforced or won't be enforced because of staff resources, that does nobody any good. But, you know, if we're really going to put in policy that it is something that's effective, that it's enforceable, and that will, you know, lead to desired results. Me personally, I'm certainly no expert on this, although I feel like I've learned a lot over 15 years that we've reviewed this over various intervals. And I do have very real concerns about what would happen if buying a pet went straight to, not necessarily the black market, but online sales or, you know, non-restricted, you know, entities and what that would, what that would mean, because, you know, I think it seems like every family in Frisco has a pet. And there are few and far between that don't have pets. And so there is a demand, that demand will be filled, and we'd love to find ways that demand is filled in a variety of ways, that healthy and well-cared-for animals are ending up in their homes. And I don't know that personally necessarily shutting down a business leads to the intended result. I don't think it leads to the intended result of shutting down effectively puppy mills. And I don't, I buy more the argument that it leads to unintended consequences of unintended results. But we'd love to hear other feedback. I think we need to tread carefully and evaluate the reaction that would happen from every action taken. And I do think there's opportunity to strengthen things, but there will be a reaction if, you know, the House bill is done. Speaking with, you know, Petland and so forth, they were the first to raise their hand that Texas is behind as a state in the procedures. I think that's something we can definitely work with. I know Representative Patterson has taken a passion to this issue. We said Navora has a passion for this issue. I think there's very much things that we could work with them and make a priority as a legislative, in a legislative session, you know, as far as strengthening those requirements. So Texas is not one of the weakest states as far as how we enforce this and the regulations that we became, that becomes an area of strength. You know, and I think the Senate version, for me personally, the Senate version of the bill seemed like a common sense next step to continue to add additional regulation to put true things in place that now, rather than just being a transparency, this is where your dog came from, that if there are violations from that location, that there is a penalty, you know, for that. You know, seemed to be kind of a net logical iteration. But with that, council, others brought it, I'll turn it to you for questions, comments.
Mayor, if I may offer one other kind of fact of the material that you received, there is a copy of that Texas Occupational Code, which is referenced in the Senate substitute bill. And that Occupational Code, it establishes standards for the care by breeders and what they have to do, and at least establishes something that broadly represents of what they would do as minimum.
I just have a few things that I'd like to say on regarding my colleagues. At the work session, I was the one that, I was one of several of favorite banning retail sales. I still think I'd really have to be my ideal solution in a perfect world where I was totally in charge, but I also struggle with shutting down small businesses, and I don't know if we'll reach into that. I have talked to Representative Patterson, I like the Senate version, he's not totally opposed to it, except that there'd be something kind of in between that's finally agreed to. But the thing that I'd just like to let everybody know, for those of you that didn't have a chance to, I did also meet with Petland the other day and talked about stuff, and they kind of asked me what I thought would help me get there, to not want to ban retail pet sales, and I kind of threw out a list of stuff that I kept on her head, so I kept adding stuff to it, and she quit on her head and stopped. But I think they're a willing partner in what they do. I had suggested things of auditing three years of sales and see which, you know, really strict, and she seemed willing to do that, so I personally would like to wait and see a response from Petland corporate before we make any decision about where we're going and maybe get more updates on the Senate bill before we do anything.
I do have a question for Petland, if you can answer, what's your process, not only your process, but your procedures when someone has a sick dog that they purchased and they want to return the dog? How do you handle that today, both in writing as well as in practice?
I'll answer that one. So as the start, and just interrupt me if I'm not directly answering what you're asking, but in the beginning, we have a policy, a written warranty that we review, in my opinion, it's very clear and straightforward. So in there, you know, it says things like, we can't guarantee an animal to be parasite or disease-free. And it says that there are no returns and there are no refunds, and that is also posted at the front as required by the ordinance. But I understand that sometimes there are situations that go the non-desired route, okay? I'm going to speak on something I don't know if I should speak on, but there was a situation years ago where things went horribly wrong, and I was very proud and thankfully documented it all extremely well, how we reacted. It was essentially, in this situation, throw that paper out the door, call the customer, what do we need to do? And I was eventually found that I did it 100% right, as you would. So Mayor Cheney, what I refer to as midnight two years ago, said, be a good corporate citizen for Frisco and do right by your consumers, verbatim what he said, and I think about that all the time. I'm a company man and I'm a family man, and I really try to view each customer from both angles. And when somebody comes in with a problem, how would I want them to handle it? What's realistic? What is the right thing to do? Is this a knee-jerk reaction? Do I need more information? But I always try to do what is right and have good communication with them. I believe in there you said, what is the process? The standard thing is, I can't be available all the time. So we have a separate company that we employ that really helps manage all of the situations, whether it's they can't get to the vet in time or the puppy had started coughing, what do I do? That way, they have one number to call, they can talk to somebody, they can leave a voicemail, we can have good record-keeping, we can obtain documents, and if I need to reimburse for vet bills, I do. I mean, I literally in the last 24, 48 hours, somebody bought a puppy and they were confused about the vet bill, why did they get charged when we said there would be no charge for the visit? Well, when I looked at the bill, what were they charged for? Heartworm and flea and tick prevention that they elected. So I said, just please let the customer know, we typically don't cover that, but I'll cut the check. I don't want him to be upset. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
So here's my thoughts on this, and I've had a chance to look at not only the ordinances, the amendment, the Senate amendment in addition to HBE 1818, as well as look at the AKC recommendations. And where I stand on this is obviously pet ownership is an emotional subject. We all love our pets and in many cases, people see this as an extended family member. And so I completely get the emotionality of this. But I think, you know, our job is to separate emotions from facts. And as I look at the fact that we put in more stringent guidelines two years ago, and we looked at how often do we come into the stores to evaluate whether or not you are living up to those violations, and based on the report, we have a consistent track record of coming in and assessing violations. I see that there were 13 violations, but four were actually cited, meaning that those are probably the areas that you need to focus on and hopefully you've done that. My concern is that we have spent a lot of time and energy discussing one single retailer in Frisco, one single retailer, and we are potentially looking at making a decision on behalf of an industry by virtue of one single retailer. If we extrapolated that, that would be concerning. I think about the number of dock-in-the-box that we have on every corner in our city, and if we had an issue where a patient was misdiagnosed, do we shut down every dock-in-the-box on the corner? Do we shut down every restaurant that we've had a bad experience with? The list can go on. I have not heard us discuss, since I've been on council, any other retailer other than this one single store on Presto Road. That concerns me. We're making huge discussions and decisions based on one retailer. Are they a bad actor? I don't know. I can't say how to operate your store. Maybe you do need some cleanup, maybe you do need more regulations, but I will not make a decision on behalf of this city based on one single retailer. What do I recommend? Should you have more consumer-friendly regulations on refunding? Perhaps, and maybe that's something that you should discuss. Should we have more stipulations around your refund policy? Absolutely. Should we look at, how do we validate the source of your animals? I don't know if that is even a possibility. I know that our police obviously are busy keeping us as safe as cities and the country, so I don't know about that. But what I do know is there should be some more increased regulations around ensuring that we do have certified breeders that you guys are using, and I think that's the basis of Senate, the Senate amendment to that. But I do not support shutting down a line of business based solely on one retailer. So that's where I stand now.
Thank you, John. I'll go next, and I've got about five or six pages of notes from the last month, so I'm not going to go through all those, but.
Thank you.
The one thing that I hear from all of the input that I've read, every email, and yes, I have read every email that y'all send, no matter if you're for or against this ordinance, I've read every email. I know I haven't responded to every one of them, sorry about that, we've been kind of inundated the last couple of weeks with another issue. The one thing that I keep coming back to, and it was actually said tonight, was it's the issue of the puppy mill and eliminating the pipeline. So for me, to stop a retailer from choosing to sell a pet and stop the public from having a choice, to try to stop the pipeline, and pun intended in this case, to tail wagging the dog. If you want to stop the pipeline, if you want to stop the bad actors, the bad breeders, to me, that's a state issue, that's a federal issue. They have the ability to, on a statewide basis, and I think the Senate bill's a good start, might need some work here or there, they have the ability to broadly take care of that on a statewide issue, and I think that is where that belongs, because every city in Texas could pass this ban, and you're not going to stop those bad breeders. They're still going to be there, they're still going to find a way to sell pets, whether it be on Craigslist or Facebook or wherever else. So I just don't see us in Frisco solving that problem, and I have a real challenge with more than likely putting 30 people out of work to try to solve a problem we're not going to solve if we pass this ordinance. So for me, I'm not in favor of a ban. Certainly, if there's ways we can strengthen it, if we can incorporate some of the Senate language, if our legislative committee wants to work with Representative Patterson and Matt Shaheen and our new representative for the other district in Collin County, we'll have three representatives going forward, I think we should do that and help get some of those policies in place at the state level. But I don't think this is an issue that Frisco needs to shut down a small business with.
So I think I'm probably one of the more workplace people on this, tired of getting, technically not on council yet until tonight. One of the things that I believe, ma'am, you said that there was a, Petland won't purchase dogs that have USDA violations for four years, is that correct?
No, that's the Senate bill.
The Senate bill will not allow that, okay. So that's my concern. This is currently two years, two years today. Okay. So that's one of my concerns, is that we're saying these are regulated puppies, these are approved puppies, and they're registered puppies, but we cannot put that on our police to enforce. That is way out of their jurisdiction, and they don't have the resources to do a nationwide search and research. So if we have something that puts into place, like I got an email actually just this week that showed a pet that was on display and a USDA violation of that particular breeder. So our police can't be the ones to regulate that. So if there is a way that Petland takes ownership and responsibility of providing that information that says we have no violations, and proactively, if you get a violation from somebody, to go, to notify the purchasers of that.
This is the correct ordinance.
That's step one, okay? And you and I had this conversation, actually. One of the big loopholes from the first ordinance that I thought was we required minimum vaccinations for these puppies. When you have animals that are so close together and in so close proximity and are being handled by so many people, you are bound to have diseases. That's why when you bring a dog home, you keep them at home for a period of time until they're through their vaccination records. I thought it was a big miss on us overall, allowing dogs that did not have some of the basic vaccinations going into a group scenario. And that is where you will see Harbo, Kennel Dog, things that create problems and breed very quickly. So at the least, I would say number two with that. So I will, I did not get a copy of the Senate version, I'm pretty well-reversed on it, but I will review it again to take a look at it. I was very supportive of the House, I actually gave Jared some of my feedback on that at the time. I would absolutely be in favor of doing more than what we have now.
Be careful if I'm wrong, there's a database that's easily searched for these reasons?
Online, yes.
So we can ask for reporting?
Yeah, should be able to provide it.
Yes, and we can absolutely provide that.
As the newbie, you can't vote either.
Well, you would eventually vote.
Eventually. And I'm totally unfamiliar with the pet world, I'm one of those new people in Frisco that do not own and never grew up with one.
You're the last one standing.
There's two of us.
I was going to say, I saw this.
An allergy issue, right?
I had one for like four days.
No, my mother was bit as a child in South Korea, and from that point, it was like no dogs ever.